Followed order, the city council meeting scheduled for December 4th, 2023. Please call the roll.
Member Karen? Member Chaney Huggett?
Here.
Member Gates?
Here.
Member Traver?
Here.
Member Underhill?
Here.
Member Wolfersberger?
Here.
We have Quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to excuse Councilmember Karen.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Gates, supported by Councilmember Traver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sign. Motion carries. That brings us to our invocation. Pastor Brandon Crawford, please.
Thank you, Mayor Schwartz, and let's pray. Lord, we do thank you so much for your continued kindness to our city. Thank you for the spirit of community that pervades this place. But thank you for our continued prosperity and peace, and we pray that we might continue to enjoy all of it by your grace. And Lord, I pray for this council, that you would bless them and their families in every way. I ask that you would give them wisdom from above, that they might make good decisions for this city. Pray that you would help them to always have a sense of what would be right for them to do. Lord, help them to be responsive to the needs of their constituents. And I pray that you would help them and help us all to build a community here that is worthy of every last resident. We pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Item six will be public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall have, be limited to speaking to a maximum of three minutes on agenda items only. And then, under item seven A, we have our city council minutes and the consent agenda. Seven B, city bills with a total of $652,140.35, followed by C, 2024 city council meeting dates. Seven D, our 2024 board and commission vacancies. Item seven E will be our special event application from the Frank Center for the Ice Wine Beer and Blues Festival. And then, I want to amend and add item F, that is a resolution to set an alternate date for the tax board of review, which will be originally stated for 12/4 of 23 and be moved to 12/13 of 23. Then, under item eight, presentations and recognitions, we'll have a presentation on our 2023 annual financial audit. Under item nine, informational items, we don't have any this evening. Item 10, public hearings as subsequent council action. This is where persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes per the public hearing. And under 10A, we have a special land use application, 2303 for tractor supply at 15861 West Michigan Avenue. Followed by 10B, the creation of an Oprah district, 135 West Mansion Street. Then, we go to item 12A, which is reports and recommendations, parking ordinance update. 12B, 135 West Mansion Street, Oprah exemption requests at a public hearing. 12C, county hazard mitigation plan adoption. 12D, wastewater treatment plant clarifier rehabilitation. And then, under 12E, M.D.O. contract for the North Apron and West Taxway at Brooks Field. There is no appointments and elections. And then, we follow by item 14 on public comment on non-agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to two minutes of speaking on non-agenda items. Followed by 15, council and manager communications, and then adjournment. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, amended agenda as presented?
So moved.
Or? Approve, or motion by Councilmember Gates, seconded by Councilmember Wolfersberger. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Councilmember Gates?
Yes.
For Traver? Member Underhill?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes. That brings us to item six on our public comment on agenda items. Persons wishing to address, council will have three minutes to do so on agenda items only. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
We're recording now.
Once again, Barry Wayne Adams, 622 West Green Street. In spite of the bigger real world indicators that shows that the mega site project is doomed to failure, it seems like the people who are getting a direct benefit from it are still pressing forward. So, you know, it's just a matter of how big a hole you're going to dig before you have to fill it back up. And it's been interesting that across the nation, there's been governors are now following the governor of Arkansas, who has
Mr. Adams, this is on agenda items?
This is an agenda item.
What is?
What I'm talking about.
The Blue Oval?
I had to, yes, it is.
And that's under item what?
It's part of agenda, all of it right here.
We're not speaking about Blue Oval at this meeting?
Then please enumerate for me what criteria I'm allowed to speak on.
And everything I read that's on the agenda, which you have in front of you.
Well, you read the whole thing, so until I actually make the connections as to how this applies to agenda items, you're making a presumptuous
Well, you're talking about something that's not on the agenda, so go ahead.
Well, even still, Article 165 of the Michigan Constitution says you can't even make such a rule. You can't even make such a rule, and you need to remember that. Okay, thanks for backing down. Governors across the nation are taking heed to the CCP threat, and they are now prohibiting land ownership and engaging in contracts. And it seems that Ford has also balked on having to provide the demanded paperwork to show their contractual relationship with CATL. So, things are falling apart, but, you know, you're still actively engaged in the destruction of the land over there. Even though there is the possible of reclamation, it's just a matter of how big a hole you're going to dig. Now, these other things that you're going on with this agenda are part of a presumption that the project is going to continue and succeed. Ford has done its best as trying to show that it still has interest in it, but they still have over 100,000 cars that they can't sell. And now, 400 Ford dealers are telling Ford that we don't even want to sell the cars, and there's now a lawsuit being brought up by Ford dealerships against Ford to have them stop making EVs.
And again, I don't see any agenda items that were addressed. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, that brings us to item seven, consent agenda. Under seven A, we have city council minutes from the regular session. On our last regular session, item seven B, we have city bills, purchases on 11/17/2023 for $274,642.17 under purchases on 11/22/2023 in the amount of $156,187.41. Purchases on 12/5/2023 in the amount of $221,310.77 for a total of $652,140.35. We also have under item C, our 2024 city council meeting dates. To set those, item D, our 2024 board and commission vacancies. Item E, special event application for the Frank Center for the Ice Wine Beer and Blues Festival. And F, a resolution to set the alternate date for the tax board of review to be held on 12/13/2023. I get a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support?
Your Honor, being that I work for the Frank Center, I'm happy to recuse myself from this vote. If it pleases the council, since it does pertain to the Frank Center. I won't personally receive any financial benefit as a result of the event, but the Frank Center does.
Any objections? Seeing none, you can be recused. We have a motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Chaney Huggett. A roll call vote, please.
I was going to start, sorry. Councilmember Traver?
Yes.
Councilmember Underhill?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to item eight A, presentations and recognitions. 2023 annual financial report. William, are you presenting? Can you do the introduction, please?
Council, Aaron Stevens is here from Manor, and he's going to give a brief overview of what he finds interesting, at least, and hopefully you guys think it's interesting, too. Thank you. I did pass out tonight a presentation outline, or handout, I guess, to go for the financial statement audit report. I did not duplicate the financial statements. I put some charts and graphs in there. Hopefully, it's a little easier to digest, but want to start out and thank William and the finance department, as well as the rest of the city administration and staff for their courtesy cooperation and assistance. We know that the audit is a disruption, so we do appreciate everyone's help while we're here on site and after we're gone. What I plan to do is highlight what I think are the key areas. If you've got questions, feel free to sign me up, and we can go through those. On page two of the presentation handout, I've got a title slide for the independent auditors report. It's presented on pages one through three of the report on the financial statements. And the purpose or the objective of an audit is to express opinions on the financial statements as to whether they're fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. The purpose of an audit is not to detect fraud or give you an opinion on your internal control. And that is because fraud detection, deterrence, and prevention, as well as sound internal control, are management responsibilities. Now, if we find fraud, if we have recommendations on how to improve your internal control, we certainly would share that with you. And it would be done in a written form, but that's a byproduct of the audit itself. So, the audit, the independent auditor support is presented on pages one through three of the financial statements, and I've included just a couple of paragraphs. I included three paragraphs from the independent auditor's report in your handout. Page number three of the handout, this is the second paragraph on page one of the report, and this is what we refer to as unmodified. We've expressed unmodified opinions, and I've highlighted the phrase "present fairly in all mature respects." That is the unmodified opinion. To put that into some perspective for you, there are three types of opinions we could express. You have the unmodified or the clean opinion. That's what you want to see as a council. You could have expressed a qualified opinion, and that might read something like, except for capital assets, the financial statements are fairly presented. So, there would be some exception to that, to the unmodified opinion. We could have expressed an adverse opinion where the financial statements are not fairly presented. The only other alternative that we have would be to disclaim an opinion altogether. We couldn't audit your records, and therefore, we will not give you an opinion. So, you have the unmodified opinions. That's the highest level of assurance that we can provide for set of financial statements, and that's what you want to see. You've got the most desirable result of an audit. On slide number four, page number four of the handout, this is the fourth paragraph on page one, and we highlight that management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. And that does include the internal control over that preparation and fair presentation. And then, in the first paragraph on page two, I've included that slide as well on page five of the handout. It's a lot of words, so I broke every presentation rule out there, but I highlighted why, again, what I think is important. We have, our objectives are to obtain reasonable, but not absolute assurance. We don't look at every single transaction. You don't want to pay us to look at every single transaction. We make sample selections, and we obtain that reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement and not all misstatement. So, there could be some of the statements that we don't detect as part of our audit, because we don't look at every single transaction, so. Now, the report does include two sets of financial statements. You've got government-wide financial statements presented on pages 13 through 15. These are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting, meaning they primarily have a long-term perspective, but they're prepared once a year. The only time you see this level of reporting is in that bound report, well, yours is electronic, but in the report on the financial statements. So, my presentation is going to focus on the fund-level financial statements as opposed to the government-wide. But just a couple of highlights, governmental activities, you had strong liquidity, a current ratio of 4.5 as of June 30th, 2023. Your unrestricted net position is actually negative for the governmental activities because of the amount of long-term debt, net pension liability, and net OPEB liability that you have recorded. The pension is 54% funded. Your OPEB plan or your retiree healthcare is 33% funded. This fiscal year, you did use $653,000 of net position, again, on the full accrual basis of accounting. Business-type activities, the other type, activity type, you added 5.3 million to your total net position for business-type activities as a whole. But business-type activities are the same as each of your enterprise funds, so we're going to talk about that in more detail later. It's a different format, but it is the same basis of accounting when we get to the enterprise funds. On page seven of the handout, governmental fund financial statements are presented on pages 16 and 18, you have the balance sheet and the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Governmental funds are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting. And what that means is they have a current financial resources focus. So, what you won't see on the balance sheet are things like your capital assets, your long-term debt, your net pension liability, your net OPEB liability, and so forth. The fund-level financial statements should be a more familiar presentation for you, because that is the level at which your budgets are prepared on an annual basis, and the interim reporting that you get throughout the year is done at the fund level. So, I'm going to focus on the general fund, so starting on page eight of the handout. The governmental funds balance sheet is presented on page 16 of the financial statement report. It is a snapshot as of June 30th, 2023, of your governmental fund assets, liabilities, deferred inflows of resources, which are a lot like liabilities, and the net of those three items would be your fund balance or your equity. I focus on the general fund because it is the operating fund for the city. Total fund balance of the general fund as of June 30th, 2023 was about $3.6 million. That $3.6 million is broken, could be broken down into five potential classifications. You only happen to have three of those classifications in the general fund. You've got amounts categorized or classified as non-spendable, committed, and unassigned. When I look at the health of a general fund, I typically refer to the unrestricted fund balance. Unrestricted would include both assigned and unassigned portions of fund balance. You don't happen to have any assigned fund balances of June 30th. Your unassigned fund balance in the general fund was about $2.4 million. And I compare that $2.4 million to your expenditures and your transfers out to other funds. So, 2.4 divided by expenditures of 8.1 million plus another 430,000 of transfers out to other funds. That 2.3, 2,376,000 represents approximately 28% of your annual expenditures and transfers out to other funds. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you maintain a minimum fund balance in the general fund that is equal to two months of normal operations. Two out of 12 months is about 17%, and your general fund is at 28%. So, you've got about 3.3 months of operations in the general fund as of June 30th. On page nine of the handout, the governmental funds financial state, or excuse me, governmental funds, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Again, high level, total revenues for the year, just over $8 million. That was an increase of about $1.4 million from 2022, so about a 21% increase. 689,000 of that was from new right-of-way rent, and another $467,000 was cost allocation reimbursement back to the general fund. On the expenditure side, expenditures, about 8.1 million as well, also an increase of about 8% from the previous year. 156,000 of that was for defined benefit plan contributions, or increase in defined benefit plan contributions, as well as increased expenses for multiple operating and replacement charges. Your net other financing uses, so you have transfers in and transfers out, and that's to about 424,000, transfer out, resulting in a use of fund balance of $435,000 for the year. In 2022, you added 180,000 to fund balance in the general fund. On page 10, we've got a five-year bar graph that shows you the general fund revenues, expenditures, and total fund balance. You added, you've added to your fund balance in the general fund for four of the past five years. So, 2023, you did use some of that fund balance. There's nothing wrong with using some fund balance. Again, you ended the fiscal year with about 28% of your annual expenditures remaining in fund balance, which is higher than the minimum recommended by the GFOA. But that, I would like to stress, that's a minimum recommendation, not a maximum recommendation, so I don't think 28% is excessive. I think it's healthy. I think you're in a good spot. On page 11 of the handout, composition of general fund revenues, property taxes were 53%. In the previous year, there were 50% intergovernmental, which would include any federal, state, and/or local revenues coming into the general fund at 15%. Those were 16% in the previous year. The other does look rather large at 32%, but it does include those cost allocation reimbursements, as well as charges for services, licenses, permits, fines and forfeits, interests, and so forth. Your investment performance didn't have quite a turnaround in 2023. It was fairly negative in 2022, so that's why the other sources is so large at 32%. The composition of your expenditures, page 12 of the handout, relatively consistent from '22 to '23. Public safety at 43%, that was 42% in 2022. Public works at 18%, which was the same as 2022, and then general government at 26%, also the same as 2022. The line graph on page 13 is that calculation of your general fund unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. Again, you're at 28% ending in June 30, 2023. It is the lowest point in the last five years, but still far, you know, well above the recommended minimum of 17%. You've hovered around 30% for the last five years. The proprietary fund financial statements presented on pages 20 through 25 are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting, just like the government-wide financial statements are. As I said, the same information is reported under business-type activities. On the government-wide statements is broken down in more detail in the proprietary fund financial statements. So, I did not duplicate the financial statements. I do have some charts and graphs on the major funds, major proprietary funds. So, starting on page 15 of the handout, with the electric fund, revenues have steadily increased over the past five years, and you've built up a fund balance there, a strong upward trend, so that's in healthy position. However, if you look on the next page, that's the total, so let me back up a bit. I apologize. Page 15, that's revenues, expenses, and total fund balance. That total fund balance includes the amount that you have invested in your capital. You can't spend your electric system, so that's not available for future use. The slide on the, or the graph on the next slide, or page 16, breaks that total fund balance down into the amounts that are unrestricted, restricted, and invested in capital assets. So, what you have available for use, future use, is the green portion of that bar. Up until 2023, that was negative. So, you turn the corner in the electric fund, and your unrestricted net position ended the fiscal year at $2.4 million. In the previous year was a negative 1.2, so a huge success story there for the electric fund. The wastewater fund, on page 17, again, total revenue, total expenses, total net position. As you can see there, revenues have exceeded expenses in each of the past five years. But once again, that total net position is not available for future use. So, if you look on slide or page 18, what you have for use is that green portion that was $1.6 million as of June 30th, 2023, which was an increase of about 100,000, 150,000 or so. For the water fund, again, revenues exceeding expenses in each of the past five years, strong upward trend there, the total net position. Page 20, again, the unrestricted portion ended the year with about $1.9 million. And as you can see there, in 2019, that was also negative, so that fund has turned around in the past five years as well. The fiber net fund is, still has negative total net position as of June 30th, 2023, but has also made great strides here. The first two years of this bar graph, you actually used net position, 2019 and 2020, expenses exceeded revenues. The last three years, revenues have exceeded expenses, and you've been able to reduce that deficit net position. And on page 22, you can see that the unrestricted net position is a negative $3.2 million at the end of 2023, but an improvement over 2022. Because the city has expended more than $750,000 of federal awards, you again were required to have a single audit or an audit performed in accordance with the uniform guidance, which is the other report. It's the thinner report. Again, I know you only have PDFs of that, but what this means is that we had to do additional planning, testing, and reporting. I did include a couple of schedules in your handout here. Just, I thought it was easier to show you than to try to make a graph out of this, but the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is presented on page four of the separate report. Total expenditures of federal awards, 1,578,000. It was 1,228,000 in the previous year, so you spent a little more on federal funds. We were required to select two programs as major federal programs and test those programs to obtain our required coverage, which was 40%. Those two programs that we selected gave us 40.9%, so just, we didn't test too much. We tested just enough. And what we needed to test, the schedule of findings in question costs, starting on page 25. This is a required schedule when an audit is performed in accordance with the uniform guidance. There are three sections to it. This is the beginning of section one on page 25 of the handout. As you can see, we expressed an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which I went over earlier. No material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. There was some non-compliance that was related to budget variances Uh, under the federal awards, the single audit portion of the audit, um, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, an unmodified opinion with your compliance on major federal programs, uh, that we tested, so. Um, we did have the unfavorable, unfavorable budget variances comment, uh, in the report, which was a repeat, um, we had a similar comment last year. On page twenty-six of the handout, this is the rest of section one. The two programs that we selected as major, the two programs that were tested were the section eight program and the CSLRF, the coronavirus funding, um. Now, you, you, so the last thing on there, you could not qualify as a low risk auditee because you have to have, uh, you have to be free of material weaknesses for two consecutive years, um, and single audits for two consecutive years. You had a material weakness in, in, uh, twenty twenty-one, so we could not consider you a low risk auditee. The, the difference there is that if you were a lower risk auditee, we could only, or we would only be required to test twenty percent of your federal awards because you're not, we had to test forty percent, so. On page sixty-six of the financial statement report, we have a note disclosure, note seventeen, uh, upcoming accounting pronouncements, I sometimes joke and say this is the Auditor Employment Act section of my presentation. Uh, we have, or you have two new accounting standards that you have to, uh, to implement over the next two years. Gatsby Statement one hundred, uh, accounting changes and error corrections. The statement defines what those are and how to report those going forward. Um, so i- it's not all that different than what you're doing now, but there is a change there, uh, to the extent that you have accounting changes and or error corrections. Uh, so, and that's effective for the fiscal year that you're in now. Um, Gatsby Statement one hundred and one is on compensated absences, and again, there's some definitions as to what a compensated absence is and how those are handled and reported. Um, you don't report those in a governmental fund, but they do get reported on government-wide full accrual statements as well as the enterprise financial statements. I know I went through that fairly quickly and I know it's an exciting topic, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions by council?
Uh, I'll just say, um, congrats to Will and our, and our department, finance department. Uh, sounds like things are definitely moving in the right direction, a lot, a lot better, uh, view of our finances than we've seen in the past, so thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, thank you, definitely, um, and I, I couldn't agree more. It, it was a smooth process. We appreciate Will's help and his, and his team.
I have a question, just, can you explain a little more the material weaknesses with regard to the, um, the federal programs? Just make sure everybody's clear on what that means.
What a material weakness is?
Yeah.
So, a material weakness would be, um, w- would be where there was an, there was an error to the extent that the, the s- um, scheduled federal awards was not fairly presented. Um, so, you know, federal awards were either over reported, reported or under reported to a, you know, a material dollar amount, which we would calculate on a year-by-year basis, so we would, materiality is generally five percent of the, the major federal program expenditures, so it would, you know, there would have to be a mistake uh, that went undetected, that, that we found as part of the audit to be, to be a material weakness. Um, and then you've got, you've got significant deficiencies, which are those items that are less than material weaknesses, but still, uh, warrant the attention of those charged with governance. Um, and then non-compliance is just, you didn't follow the rules, so. There, there could be other material weaknesses as well in internal control, so that the, the, um, dollar amount may not put, you know, come into play as far as the, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, but you could have material weaknesses because of a lack of internal control.
And that was back in twenty twenty-one?
In twenty, so the, in twenty twenty-one, there was, uh, there, there was a material weakness, I think, I'm trying to remember, might have been for journal entries. It wasn't on the federal programs, it was on the financial statements.
Correct.
Um, you didn't have any material weaknesses related to federal programs in twenty twenty-one. Um, but in, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, you could not have been considered a lower risk auditee either because you had not had two previous single audits consecutively. Um, so now you're getting to that point, um, next year you would be considered a lower risk auditee.
Very good. Good job, Will. Any other comments? I'll take a motion to accept the twenty twenty-three annual audit. Motion by Councilmember Gates, supported by Councilmember Wolfersberger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to item ten A, special land use application, twenty-three point oh-three tractor supply. Public hearing. Eric, you want to give us a little breakdown on that?
You're Mr. Mayor, Council. The new owners of the, uh, former Kmart Plaza have been working to fill the building for several years now and, um, over the past year, they've been working with Tractor Supply to locate here, uh, in a portion of the building. Their tractor supply is looking, taking the third, the west third of the building and then have some exterior storage, which is why we're here tonight. As a store, Tractor Supply would be permitted by right, no problem. Uh, they could open tomorrow. However, they wanted to do some exterior display of items on the sidewalk and parking lot. They wanted to add propane. Um, so, normal tractor supply store issues, but in our zoning ordinance, they're required to special land use. So, what that process is, it goes to the planning commission, they review the special land use, and then they make a recommendation to the city council. You're the final decision maker. You've done this multiple times this year. Planning Commission reviewed this and the site plan for TSC uh, at their last meeting in November, it's actually the joint planning commission, because this was a former, uh, property that came in through four twenty-five. And they're, they made a recommendation to approve the special land use. Uh, with us, Tice, is Richard Lindsay, who's representing the owner, uh, and present, and he prepared these documents, um, that were submitted as part of the special land use request. Staff, uh, staff recommendation is in there. We're recommending that council approve it and allow TSC to move forward and opening a Marshall store. Have to answer any questions.
You, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Richard Lindsay, here on behalf of VR Great Northern Mall, which is the owner of the, the property. I don't really have anything to add to what Mr. Siskas just said, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Uh, TSC is very excited to, again, open a store, um, this spring in the Marshall Kmart buildings. It'll be a third full. They've got another potential client and then they'll find the third client, so hopefully it'll be full even within twenty twenty-four, so glad to answer any questions.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Barry Wayne Adams, six point two West Green Street. Uh, the terms and conditions of the waiver in tort are still in effect. It's interesting that, uh, you're trying to bring in a tractor supply while, on the one hand, and then on the other hand, you're busy destroying farmland. So, uh, you know, this, you know, businesses go the way they go and sometimes they make good decisions, sometimes they don't. And, uh, evidently there's a tractor supply in Battle Creek and a tractor supply in Albion and, you know, oversaturation, uh, has, uh, business consequences, so, you know, I'm sure you guys are willing to take whoever is going to come by and toss some money in the coffer, but, uh, uh, again, uh, we may be looking at, uh, uh, another ambitious business decision that will, uh, spiral downhill very quickly. Uh, particularly when there is, uh, after reviewing the different Facebook pages, the uncivil Facebook pages, of course, uh, that, uh, there is, uh, going to be a, uh, decided opposition to, uh, patronize Marshall businesses uh, as a result of the, uh, usurpation of, uh, referendum power that's, uh, seems to be going on right now. Now, who knows how long Marietti is going to kick the can down the road. And already it's, it's a matter of, uh, justice delayed is justice denied. Uh, the, uh, claims of the plaintiff to, uh, uh, reinstate the, uh, either reinstate the, uh, the referendum or city voters or to actually declare your, uh, rezoning, uh, ordinance as, uh, unconstitutional because it, uh, inappropriately attached a, uh, in the inappropriate appropriation. Uh, and, uh, but, you know, we're used to these kind of, uh, half-baked, uh, maneuvers to try to circumvent, uh, constitutional rights that go on in this county and the city. And, uh, uh, we, I guess we can only expect more, but, uh, you know, well, we know that, uh, you know, you've got your story and you're sticking to it, but, uh, once things get outside of the county, uh, there will be a big change, uh, and, you know, people across the nation are starting to, uh, see what's going on. That Free Press article about the dark money, uh, actually got in the USA Today, so everybody across the country knows what's going on.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes.
Lee Rathwell, Suresco. Um, I'm just really surprised that you would listen to the joint planning commission. I mean, I think it's a good idea to fill existing buildings with new businesses, but it's surprising that you would even pay any attention to what they say. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This time I close the public hearing, um, and the special use permit. Twenty-three point oh-three, uh, comments by council.
Uh, I'll just say, Your Honor, I think this is, you know, I know a lot of people have been looking for a long time for, um, for something to come into that space. It'll be a, um, it's not quite a, a like-for-like for the Kmart, but, uh, but it will provide, uh, some of the same types of, uh, uh, retail offerings that it did, so it's a good, uh, it's a good start for our community.
I do agree, um, what the special end use permit is to display objects outside of the, the building, being in fact, uh, Tractor Supply Company, that would make sense, um. Anytime we can bring business, uh, tax revenue into the city, um, making our city more viable, I think that's, that's very positive, so. Any other comment?
I would just say, looking at the map of where they plan to use that outdoor space, I think it's well-thought-out, it makes sense. It's over at the far end of that parking lot and I think it's visually going to be fine and going to be a good use of the space, so.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to approve the special land use for Tractor Supply Company to allow outdoor displays of trailers, propane plants and other related items at one five eight six one West Michigan Avenue. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Underhill. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gates?
Yes.
Councilmember Traver?
Yes.
Councilmember Underhill?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. It brings us to item ten B, uh, public hearing on creation of an Oprah district at one thirty-five West Manchester Street. Eric?
Well, good evening again. Uh, this, uh, request came in from Fonda Amy Friends, who are looking to, uh, redevelop the former Harvester Flower Shop into a mixed-use type facility on the main floor, which would have kitchen space and all, and, um, an apartment on the second floor. As part of the requirement for the obsolete property rehabilitation Act, we need to create a district. This is the first step uh, in this process, which is just the parcel of land that the building is on, that lot. Uh, so staff is recommending the, uh, approval of the creation of the Oprah District. This will allow you to then later in your agenda, schedule the consideration of the public hearing for the actual exemption.
Thank you. Now, it's based on the amount of renovation, correct?
Yeah, the, when we, when we do the actual exemption, it's the amount of investment that they put in, how many years? They're right on the cusp of six or eight years, depend, they go, they're really close to the half a million dollar level. Uh, so with that new policy, they would either six or eight years, depending on where they end up.
This is just establish the Oprah District.
This is just the Oprah District tonight.
Thank you. That, I'll open the public hearing, um, resolution two zero two three dash thirty-four to establish a creation of an Oprah District at one thirty-five West Mansion Street. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Barry Wayne Adams, six point two West Green Street. Uh, again, classic corporate fascism, uh, seems the government doesn't have anything else to do except create more corporate forms to control and regulate individual, uh, activity. And, uh, you know, ju- it just shows that there is no dividing line between, uh, government and, uh, commercial interests now. Uh, you know, just like with the, the nonsense with the, uh, the mega site. Uh, you know, you people, you know, MCL fifteen point one five one, you're all, uh, presumed to have taken an oath of, uh, office to, uh, uphold the federal and state constitutions and, uh, it's, uh, Article nine, section eighteen of the Michigan Constitution says that, uh, private and public interests are to be kept separate. So, uh, you know, these kind of things are, you know, blurring the line between public and private. And when that happens, that is, uh, classic fascism, you know, like, like Mussolini said, the merging of, uh, uh, corporations, government and the military. And, you know, display of your flag, you're operating in the military authority under the governor's authority, acting as commander in chief, Article five, section twelve of the Michigan Constitution. So, this is so fundamentally treasonous that, uh, it can undoubtedly shake the cognitive dissonance of, uh, everyone sitting up there who is now rolling their eyes behind their head. But this is a reality, uh, you know. I've done decades of research on this stuff, tested it all the way up to the United States Supreme Court, not one denial ever. Our, come, our country has been taken over by, uh, globalist interests who are using corporate forms to, uh, displace our, uh, individual freedoms and we end up being nothing more than, uh, corporate-weighted slaves and, you know, it seems like this city council is fine with turning Marshall into a breeding farm for electric vehicle battery manufacturing, factota. But, uh, you know, it's not like you should not hear this. If you didn't know this, you know, how did you get to your age without having discerned this? Especially when you take an oath of office to uphold the constitution. Is the constitution really still in effect? What does the constitution protect?
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Um, I'm Amy Friends, the owner of one thirty-five West Mansion Street in Marshall. And, uh, I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to, um, not only be part of this meeting, but to be considered, um, uh, to receive the Oprah. And we just want to say, my husband and I are very proud to be, um, business owners here in Marshall. And we've lived here for over twenty-five years now and, uh, we're very proud to own one of the historical beauties on Mansion Street and would really appreciate the opportunity to restore it and continue business there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none? Seeing none, what was the public hearing? Counsel? Comment? Um, this is to set the Oprah district. And it's obsolete property that this is referring to, which, um, brings it back into code and compliance and, and back on, uh, a taxable value. So great idea for the city, um, that area of the city. And appreciate the opportunity, uh, to fix that property up. With that, um, I'll take a motion to approve resolution two-zero-two-three-dash-thirty-four, a resolution to establish a obsolete property rehabilitation district for one-thirty-five West Mansion Street.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Traver, supported by Councilmember Underhill. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Councilmember Gates?
Yes.
Councilmember Traver?
Yes.
Councilmember Underhill?
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. Bring us to item twelve A, parking ordinance update. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Uh, over the last two years, uh, we've been working to update our parking ordinance and, uh, parking permit process. Um, just seems like we're always trying to continually improve on what we have. Uh, if you remember right, in May of two thousand twenty-two, we updated sections of seventy-point-zero-zero-eight, uh, addressing street parking, on-street parking, that permit process, and also, um, residence, uh, sideyard parking. We did some work there. Uh, in December of two thousand twenty-two, we had a work session with council, uh, regarding municipal parking lots, uh, where we, uh, presented and discussed the ordinance, uh, and some proposed changes, uh, to the ordinance. Uh, the feedback that we received, uh, from the DDA and, uh, from some of the public, uh, was that the municipal, uh, parking permit was not favorable, um, to everybody. Um, and we, uh, kind of had the consensus that, uh, designated overnight parking sections would be more beneficial, uh, to the community as a whole. Um, we kind of left that workshop with some goals of, uh, completing a, a parking study with the DDA and doing some assessments and completing, uh, an updated ordinance, uh, uh, for, uh, changing. Uh, over the last year, uh, staff has worked to gather information, uh, regarding, uh, the parking lot, the sixteen parking lots. We, uh, worked with, um, uh, the DPW, uh, to, uh, map out different areas where we, uh, you know, accumulate the snow. Uh, we worked with, uh, our, um, GIS expert, um, specialist, uh, John Skiles, who mapped out each, uh, all six-hundred-and-forty-two parking spots. Uh, and, uh, we looked at designating those, uh, with special designations for, uh, handicap, to make sure that we're ADA compliant, uh, to make sure that we are supplying, uh, enough of the, and laying out all the electrical or the electric vehicle, uh, charging, uh, parking spots, and, uh, laying out some designated overnight parking spots, uh, which I believe totaled about eighty-four. Uh, we used this map to identify, uh, those spots. And, um, we then worked with, uh, prosecutor, uh, John Sullivan, city prosecutor, to come up with a, um, parking, um, ordinance to update our parking ordinance, uh, seventy-point-zero-zero-eight. The proposed ordinance that we're bringing forward for tonight, uh, it took us some time to get all, all that together because we're looking at this, the whole, everything all together, right? Uh, I don't think that we've, uh, brought, uh, this to council. I think you have to have both of them at the same time, the ordinance and all the parking information to make good decisions. So, um, with that, our, uh, the, uh, proposed ordinance, uh, eliminates the permit process, uh, for the municipal, uh, parking lot, uh, and establishes a designated area for overnight parking. Uh, it changes the overnight parking from, it was set at for three AM to six AM. That changes that from two AM to six AM to be consistent with our on-street parking as well, which is the same hours. Uh, the proposed changes in the ordinance and the updated plan, uh, provide adequate overnight parking, uh, for growing downtown residents and visitors. Uh, budget impact, there's a anticipated, uh, decrease in revenue, uh, for permits. Those have fluctuated over the years. We've had, um, you know, as high as, uh, fifty some, and then we've had as low as fifteen. So there will be, uh, that, but there's also the overall cost savings of not having to enforce that and not having to, you know, buy the permits and, and, and have all the staff, uh, process those, uh, invoices and whatnot. Uh, the recommendation is to improve the introduction of ordinance twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-three dash fourteen, an ordinance amending Marshall Code of Ordinances, section seventy-point-zero-zero-eight, uh, parking regulations, and set a public hearing for January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, uh, at seven PM.
Thank you. Questions by council? So when you're deciding the number of overnight parking, is that based on residences already downtown to accommodate that? Is there going to be enough?
So what we did is, uh, we had, we had a assessment. We had a midnight shift. Our midnight officers go out and make sure that they, we counted all the, all the overnight parkers for a period, uh, you know, for a couple of months. And on average, it was around, around fifty. Uh, so we, we, we accommodated eighty-four, um, regular parkers. And then we also incorporated, um, locations for handicap overnight, for electric vehicle overnight. So we kind of incorporated all of those. So, uh, at this point, we believe it's going to be, um, uh, you know, with the growing downtown, I, I think it's, and some of the, I, I guess, feedback that we got from the public as well, because we have people that, you know, well, you know, if you've been out to the bar and I don't want to drive my home, my car, my car home, or, or we have, you know, employees that, that might have, you know, might want to stay or visitors that come in to downtown and want to, want to park overnight, having that, that availability for that. So uh, as far as our assessment right now, we do have enough. Um, and this is obviously going to be something we're going to have to assess, and a few more years to find out, okay, do we need to expand those locations? Or, um, and do we need to look at other solutions as well? But I believe this is the best solution at this point.
Those vehicles parked outside of the designated overnight parking?
Yep.
They're still subject to fine?
Correct.
Okay. And what are we doing on snow removal?
Snow removal. So with snow removal, we've, we've put these designated parking spots in areas where, um, because we've overlaid, we overlaid all the maps, right? So we have these designated areas and areas, um, that we can work around them for snow removal.
I think part of the permit process was having information available to contact those in the, in the event they needed to be moved for emergency purposes or snow removal, snow emergency. Taking that away, you know, they're just going to be vehicles parked there. And then, um, but it takes away the other idea of having to maintain the parking permits and, and people staffing to do that. I understand that quite well. There's pitfalls with anything. Um, just please monitor the parking outside of those overnight parking. Uh, what, uh, the bars, if someone is too intoxicated, drive away. Are they still giving out the passes? So we know that?
Um, we've, well, that was part of the issue with permits. There was nothing that really in the process that allowed for that. Um, so, um, to, to, you know, forgive, for the forgiveness aspect of that. So, um, as far as I know, they, they, in talking to the bars, I don't think they're giving out those things. I think that that's kind of one of those things that was a past practice that hasn't been carried on. Um, but, uh, the idea would be we have these designated overnight parking spots, uh, that people can park. If a friend want, if they get a ride from a friend, the friend could pull the car in there and, and then take them home.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
I guess I do have, I'm one concerned about getting rid of the permits is, is we're not going to have any data available to us of who's actually utilizing this, these parking spaces. And so if we get, you know, people complaining that there's not enough, we're not going to have anything to say. Well, this is the number of, you know, that we know of. And so I, I guess I'm, I'm, you know, I'm willing, willing to try it. I, you know, if we can, if we can simplify the process and, and, you know, uh, and do a better job of meeting the needs, I think that's great. But I, um, I, I do have some concerns about, about not having data about how, you know, how many cars are actually parking in these, in these spots.
Yeah, I think some of the, some of the other information that we got back from, from the public was, you know, if we're going to pay for a permit, there's not really, I don't have a, a designated spot for me to park. You know, there's a designated area, but if that gets filled, you know, you know, then I have to move around. There's not a designated spot. So the feedback that we got from people living down there is like, if we're going to permit parking, I want a, I want one spot that has my, my number on it. This is where I'm going to park. So I think that we were kind of looking at both ways, but when we looked at it, we had six hundred, um, was the total again, six hundred and uh, forty-two spots, right? And we have fifty, fifty people parking overnight. We have an abundance of parking right now, uh, overnight-wise. I mean, I, I, I know that we're going to have those designated areas. So I mean, we have room to expand those. Um, so I think if, if we had a shortage of, of parking overnight, then I think, yeah, we, we should be looking at this more specifically. But if we, if there isn't a problem at this point, um, you know, with, with scarcity of, of spots, then, um, that's why we came up with the solution.
The only thing I'll add is this was vetted by the DDA, and, uh, you know, this actually was their preference. They prefer more of a laissez-faire-type parking system in the downtown. Uh, going into the meeting, I really thought that they would want a more organized, um, permit-based system, but, uh, this was their preference. So that's where we proceeded from. So I'm assuming the DDA has the pulse on that, uh, business community down there.
Thank you. That I'll take a motion to approve the introduction of ordinance two-zero-two-three-dash-fourteen, an ordinance amending Marshall Code of Ordinances, section seven-zero-point-zero-zero-eight, parking regulations, and set a public hearing for January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, seven PM.
So moved.
motion by Councilmember Underhill, supported by Councilmember Traver. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Traver?
Yes.
Councilmember Underhill?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Count, uh, Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Councilmember Gates? Motion carries.
Thank you. Bring us to item twelve B. Um, that is one-thirty-five West Manchester Street Oprah exemption request to set a public hearing. Eric?
Uh, as you earlier approved the creation of the district, next step is a, to create a public hearing, schedule a public hearing to consider the exemption request. Uh, that is being recommended for January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, notices will be published and sent to the tax and jurisdictions. Uh, as I mentioned, they're rated about the half a million dollar investment, which is pretty sizable. And I think what I like about the Oprah is that it rewards those people that reinvest in their properties and maintain a historic building in downtown, which we know is important to our community. So we're, staff is recommending the schedule of that public hearing.
Thank you. This is just to set the public hearing. Uh, any discussion? None. I'll take a motion to set a public hearing for January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to consider approval of an Oprah exemption for up to eight years for one-thirty-five West Mansion Street.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Traver, supported by Councilmember Gates. Right?
Yep.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Brings us to item twelve C, um, County Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption. Chief?
Mayor, Council, uh, about every five years, the county is supposed to, the emergency manager of the county, which is now Lieutenant Chris Young, is supposed to do, uh, an assessment of the county for weather-related, uh, incidents, possibilities. Basically, it's a risk assessment. Well, with that assessment, then we can go into, you know, planning for, uh, uh, risk reduction or mitigation of those. There's really nothing, um, that jumped out new at us for this one. It always has. I mean, we get the occasional winter storm and the occasional summer storm, lightning or high winds or something. But other than that, for, uh, Mother Nature is pretty good to us here in Calhoun County, and we're, uh, also show especially Marshall to be a resilient, uh, community. Uh, by adoption of this plan, if something does happen, would allow us to apply for those FEMA grants to recover from any kind of storms or damage from storms, I should say. It's a great comprehensive plan. They got a grant for it. And they hired the same firm that did it, uh, a few years back. Um, both, they did a great job with it. So any questions? I'd be happy to answer further.
Any questions for the chief? No, it's pretty straightforward. It's updating the plan countywide and, and uses of resources throughout the county, right? Yeah. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-three-dash-three-three, resolution to adopt the November twenty-twenty-three Calhoun County Michigan Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmany, Councilmember Chaney Huggett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. That brings us to item twelve D, wastewater treatment plant clarifier rehabilitation. Eric, or Alex?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, before you, in the packet, there's a report detailing the, uh, next steps in the clarifier rehabilitation project. In April, council approved the purchase of clarifier equipment with an expect, there was an expected ship date of mid-January. Uh, that ship date has been moved up to mid-December. Uh, so at this time, we're asking, uh, to approve a, uh, a change order from the, uh, original construction contract that was entered into in two thousand twenty-one to, um, approve for LD Dosa and Associates to, uh, perform the work necessary to install the new equipment in the clarifiers that still need to be rehabilitated. Uh, the change order is in the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and we're asking for a contingency of forty-four thousand, uh, for a total of four-hundred-one-thousand-five-twenty-six. Um, just a quick, uh, background on the, uh, the decision to go with the change order versus bidding the, bidding the, uh, work. Uh, Dosa, LD Dosa was the low bidder in two thousand twenty-one when we initiated this project. Uh, they were thirty percent lower than the next closest bid. Uh, they did a fantastic job on the project and, um, it was decided that the best option was just to issue the change order and continue the, uh, project with the same contractor.
Thank you. So is it my understanding that it's coming in sooner than, than anticipated? So?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. The ship date is, was moved up by about a month. Um, it has to be shipped to a painter, a local painter in, uh, Michigan. And Dosa needs to enter in a contract with that painter to have the equipment painted. So it just, the, the process was sped up by about a month. I wasn't expecting to do this until January, but, um, it just, the process got sped up. It's been the plan uh, all along. It just happened a little quicker than I thought.
Which isn't a bad thing?
No. It's a, it's a good problem to have.
Remind me, um, if this is about improving efficiency or extending the life, or if it's both, or?
It's both. Uh, the new design clarifier equipment will improve the efficiency of the clarifiers. We are seeing that in the other two that were completed in two thousand twenty-two. Um, it's hard to get a full grasp on the, on the, on the efficiencies of it because we're still utilizing, uh, one old piece of equipment and one new piece of equipment at the same time. So they don't, they're not working to their full efficiency. We fully expect that to happen after the new equipment is in place. And then, um, obviously it extends the life of the, life of the equipment. It's, they're taking every bit of moving, uh, steel out of the tank and replacing it with new, uh, new bridges, new, uh, baffles and weirs and, uh, safety equipment. So.
Do you have an anticipated efficiency improvement, or?
I don't have that right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the clarifier rehabilitation construction change order with LD Dosa and Associates for the amount of three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six with a contingency of forty-four thousand for a total amount of four-hundred-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Chaney Huggis, supported by Councilmember Wolfersberger. I'm going to need a, uh, roll call vote, spending money.
Councilmember Underhill?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett?
Yes.
Councilmember Gates?
Yes.
Councilmember Traver?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Bring us to item twelve E, the M dot contract, no- Thank you. Brings us item twelve E, the M dot contract North Apron and West Texway for Brooks Field. Eric.
Uh in front of you is a contract from M dot to pay for the engineering for the upcoming proposed work at Brooksfield. Which would be repaving the West Texway North Apron. As we discussed earlier this year, and you approved a contract with our engineering firm for the work. Uh this would actually be the vehicle which we would pay for the said engineering firm to do the work. The breakdown on cost to the the almost sixty thousand dollar project, our share is thirty-four hundred dollars and thirty-nine, three thousand four and thirty-nine dollars. So um I love M dot contracts when it like this one, we're limited to five percent of the cost. So um this amount is budgeted, will be budgeted next year. Either way, it's budget this year and will be next year if necessary, depending on when they're able to s- schedule it, but we're requesting your approval of the contract.
Thank you. Discussion council. It is in need of a repair and and um.
Yeah, the north the north apron is getting a little rough.
Yeah. All right. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the M dot contract twenty twenty-four dash zero one two seven as presented. Subject to the city attorney substantial form concurrence and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the contract documents as necessary.
I'll move.
Support.
Uh motion by Councilmember Traver, supported by Councilmember Gates. Um roll call, please.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett.
Yes.
Councilmember Gates.
Yes.
Councilmember Traver.
Yes.
Councilmember Underhill.
Yes.
Councilmember Wolfersburger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items persons addressing city council or subject. Are are required to give their name, address and record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Anybody wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Julie Bryant, Squaw Creek Marshall. Um I wanted to uh see if anybody saw an article today that came out. Um from the Center of Economic Accountability. Um they're an independent and nonpartisan five oh one three C. That works for transparency, accountability and market-based reform of state and local economic development programs. Across the country. Um the article is Michigan subsidies for Ford Motor Company. Uh electa electric battery plant named twenty twenty-three's worst economic development deal of the year. So it's all about us, guys. We're getting all this great press. Okay, um so apparently they said the award recognizes a state or municipal government. Subsidy of a private company in the name of job creation. Economic growth that goes further than any other year to exemplify the massive wastefulness. And ineffectiveness of the state government economic development subsidy programs. It said the uh Ford Motor Company and Cato in the rural Marshall, Michigan stood out to them. They included a massive seven hundred thousand dollar per job price tag for below-average jobs. The unrealistic job multipliers to artificially justify its massive price tag. And an uncertain future where success would depend on labor negotiations, consumer preferences. Which electric vehicles aren't really that popular to with anyone right now. And federal policy and technological advancements, all combined to make this deal a standout. From a very crowded field. They said, however, what they truly cemented the project as the worst economic development deal was the way. Michigan's political establishment responded when Marshall area residents affected by the project. Began expressing their concerns and asking for transparency into their state and local government decisions. Okay, so we've been standing up here since January, telling you guys, asking, asking for transparency. Asking for a vote, asking for the residents to be heard. And now people nationally, you guys got an award. Congratulations.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
I Rick Sadler, Squaw Creek. Um I'm gonna piggyback on that uh that article. Um in September, the Detroit Free Press broke the story that political groups tied to Michigan Governor Gretchen Gretchen Whitmer. Spent an un- an estimated hundred thousand dollars in dark money to rub to run a public relations campaign. Against local Marshall area residents who are being inconveniently vocal in their opposition to the deal. The Free Press made the connection between the governor's political allies and the P R campaign. Because it used consultants, lawyers and even phone numbers tied to Whitmer's twenty-two election campaign. And the State Democratic Party. Campaign activities included mailing out postcards. That used photographs of the local residents as well as robo calls and other professional campaign tactics. At the end of the day, the reported use of political consultants to run a smear campaign against the skeptical local residents. That really set Michigan's subsidies for Ford's Marshall Battery Plant uh apart from the rest of the. Corporate, the terrible corporate welfare feld, blah, sorry, welfare deals across the country. It's one thing for politicians to use fuzzy math to throw massive amounts of public money at a giant corporation. So they can take credit with voters for the so-called job creation. We see that all the time. This award was nailed down for Michigan when a governor's political cronies reportedly pushed out campaign-style mailers. Again, and robo calls against average, everyday people who dared to exercise their fundamental right. To ask their elected officials for straight answers to questions that mattered to their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Lee Rothwell, Sresko. Um I I just glanced at this article um that named the electric vehicle. But um battery plant, one of the worst economic development deals of the year. Um or the worst, and it was by the Center for Economic Accountability. And I I saw in there, it said most, you know, we were told. These were going to be really high-paying jobs and everything, but they said in there that the average worker. Most of the workers will get forty-one thousand six hundred dollars a year. Um that's below the fifty-three uh thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Which is a median um income. Uh so these aren't going to be high-paying jobs, but we were told all of that. They've so they're subsidized by thousands of dollars. Hundreds of thousands of dollars, so to get these low-paying jobs or or. Under-average paying jobs, so um that's just. Surprising that that you guys didn't listen and let us vote. Of course, the land was taken away from Marshall Township, but anyway. And then I did have a comment on the uh allowing somebody to recuse themselves when they thought they might. They might be uh. In a position where they shouldn't be voting on something, and I think that's great you let them do that this time. But with the mega mess, you guys wouldn't allow it and and it should have been allowed. Also, I appreciate being able to hear tonight. That was really nice. Um and let me see, I think that's about it, but um. I really wish, oh, and I did notice that under agenda item seven F. There wasn't a seven F on our agenda here. I was just, when that came up, I thought, oh. Seven F, it wasn't there, so that was not correct. But I really wish you would um be concerned with the the negative um postcards that went out. And all that money being wasted and all people wanted was a right to vote, just to vote. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Barry Wayne Adams again, six point two West Green Street. Uh that's me there. This was specially cropped out of a picture that had like twenty people in it. Specially cropped, special placement of a red of a threatening red X. That goes along with letters placed in red, kill, block, hurt, eliminate. This is like Manchurian Candidate stuff. Uh when I looked at the promulgation of the exhibition driving. And the deer deer baiting uh ordinances that were put in the advisor, I couldn't help but notice. The fundamental defect in the exhibition driving ordinance. The uh the deer baiting ordinance had a reference to. Uh one of the Michigan compiled laws as a source of authority, but the exhibition driving ordinance referred to just other city traffic ordinances. So it has no uh prior uh legalistic authority and it's 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 legalistic gaslighting. You know, and I don't know if it's a reflection of just how the city operates in general, but you know, even your T V monitors are backwards. So uh you know, things are things are starting to fall apart at the national level. Uh the word's getting out, it's been in USA Today, you're now getting awards. Uh but we're taking uh instruction from the people up in uh Green Township uh with their. Uh public civic activity. And uh you know, you should be thinking that uh down the line, you're probably going to be looking at. Some sort of initiative or recall uh effort. Uh particularly uh 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 as Marietti is still uh avoiding his duty. To uh rule on the uh committee's lawsuit. But uh you know, you're I know you're sticking with the story, so. Uh keep with it and then uh you know, it's just bigger, every day that goes by is going to be a bigger damage to try to reclaim everything. Uh and you know, get onto those Facebook pages and see what the voice of the people is about these things, you know. Of course, there's that uh civil discussion of the uh Marshall Megasite, which is the highly censored. Uh and uh only pro-megasite comments are uh are approved. But uh and it's also interesting that you have a very selective approach to uh the recognition of conflict of interest problems. You know, Lindsay Ling Amada making. Votes on these same conflict issues.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, that brings us to council communications, uh council member Gates.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Underhill.
I have nothing, thank you.
For Traver.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Wolfersburger.
Uh I would just like to say thank you to uh city staff, police, fire, uh Public Works, everybody who um did such a great job. Putting the Christmas parade together, uh especially the firefighters uh for for, you know, dropping everything and and making that great call. Uh to to uh save that house. Uh it's just a a great night, really enjoyed it and thank you very much.
Councilmember Chaney Huggett.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City manager.
I'm good, thank you.
Hey clerk.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, uh parade was very, very nice. Um for all those that that gave up their time, volunteered to put that together, did a great job. Kind of the worst thing, you know, firing in the middle of that parade, but then you had all of your support right there too. So darn if you do and darn if you don't, and uh good job, chief, thank you. Um never heard of the Center for Economic Development group, they wrote the article. I will look it up. I don't know where they get their numbers or their stats. But uh how they know it's going to be forty-one thousand six hundred dollars? And the median household is fifty-three thousand, but that could be a two-income household. So really could be eighty-two thousand, eighty-three thousand, if you look at it that way. So I don't know how that that comes together. Um so. I do think within the U A W agreement, it is going to be a U U A W shop, which is union. Um so they do have protections there as well, so as this develops, we will keep learning. And I did go on record and I made it very clear on that postcard that that was not anything to do with us. I don't support that. I agree one hundred percent that that should not have happened. Um and and I stated that before, so I. So I want to just um go on record as saying that that did not seem appropriate in the way that was handled. And again, nothing to do with the local government, no money is spent on that and um going forward with that. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Or motion by Councilmember Wolfersburgers, supported by Councilmember Underhill, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries, meeting is adjourned.